We have a new one yet, or is that still the old one?
That's the old one.
That's still the old one, okay.
I got a backup just in case on your, in front of you there.
When are we supposed to get the new one?
July, probably.
July, okay.
The new budget.
Makes sense, got it.
We definitely need it.
Oh yeah, that's a workhorse.
Got our money's worth, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Tonight's meeting, Planning Commission Emmitsburg is now called to order. And first thing will be to, if I, everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, et liberae, just as for all.
Okay, there is no opening statement this evening. Go next to item four, disposition of the minutes from our last meeting held on the 28th of May. Has everybody received a copy of those minutes and had a chance to look them over? Everybody nodding yes? Okay, are there any corrections, changes, or additions to be made to those minutes? If not, so may I make a motion to accept these minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes for the previous meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion been made and seconded to approve these minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion carries, 4-2-0. Also let the record show for this evening, we have four in attendance and Frank Davis is absent. Item five, old business, we have none on the agenda. Moving to item six, new business. We have an item on here for the, a presentation on the ordinance pertaining to signs in Emmitsburg. Zach, would you like to take over?
Sure, so good evening, everybody. As you all know, we have been in the process of proposing an update to our sign ordinance. Since February 4th, we have been before the Board of Commissioners a few times, presenting different things. And we, as you can see on your timetable that I presented in the staff memo, we also had four public outreach meetings for different zoning districts. We did not have one for the Recreation District because most of that property is owned by the town. So no one would have probably showed up. But if anyone does have any questions on that, please feel free to contact me. As you can see, we received the Emmitsburg Business Professional Association EBPA endorsement of the ordinance on the June 3rd. I provided a copy of that on your, in front of your desk there. So, tonight, we will be going over what the staff is proposing and what the mayor is proposing. So at their meeting held on June 3rd, 2019, the Board of Commissioners voted to forward the proposed ordinance, 19-03, Chapter 17.38, the sign code to the Planning Commission for the mandatory 30-day review in accordance with Town Code Section 174430. Board members specifically asked that the Planning Commission provide comment on the following items, which we will talk about as we go along. One, should internally illuminated signs be permitted in the Village Zone District? And two, should the town's architectural guideline documents be added as review criteria to specific sections in the code? So that's something we will talk about tonight. And then, at the end of the meeting, the board is asked to either recommend approval or recommend denial with or without comments. And then that will be taken back to the Board of Commissioners at their August 5th meeting for a public hearing and possibly a final vote that night. So, if there's no questions, we'll get started here. So please note, in no way does the town or its employees endorse any business or message depicted in the sign examples shown in this or any presentation. Please feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have any questions, comments, or concerns. So, quick notes, staff suggests repealing the current Title 15 Building and Construction, Chapter 1516 sign code and replacing it with a new Chapter 17.38. This will allow the Planning Commission to review and comment on the proposed amendment, just like tonight. And it will allow businesses and residents the opportunity to apply for zoning variances if their property has a unique hardship not recognized by the sign code. They currently cannot do this. In addition, having the sign code in a zoning ordinance is common practice in local governments all around the country. So why are we proposing a new sign code? The mayor and town manager have attended various Maryland Municipal League conferences in which dozens of professionals have recommended municipalities update their sign ordinance in order to include modern-day signage and to ensure compliance with recent Supreme Court cases, more particular Reed versus Gilbert. In this court case, the US Supreme Court found that content-based sign regulations violate the First Amendment. The town's current sign code was originally passed in the 1990s with small amendments over the years. Even if we do not violate Reed versus Gilbert, the sign ordinance is 21-years-old and does not regulate modern-day signage. If the town does not clearly prohibit or regulate a particular sign or sign element, it is permitted. So staff is trying to protect the town from future problems in litigation. The town's attorney has reviewed the proposed amendment and has approved its content. So, source of this particular amendment. So I first reached out to Jim Peck, who is a research specialist for the Maryland Municipal League, and asked for advice in sample ordinances. Mr. Peck provided me 19 sample ordinances from around the country, which he believes are the best. His number-one recommendation was crafted by the American Planning Association, for which I'm a member. I researched each of the 19 ordinances and other municipality sign ordinances throughout Frederick County before choosing the APA version. The Maryland Municipal League and the American Planning Association have an army of dedicated lawyers and staff to research different issues and determine what is legal and what is working for communities all across the nation, and also what problems our communities have all across the nation. Staff highly respects and recommends their work, as do thousands of other municipalities, planners, and professionals. The American Planning Association has over 40,000 members from every state and more than 70 countries. So I modified their APA sample ordinance to fit our town's zoning ordinance. I also made sign size adjustments based on historical nature of the town and recommendations from the 2015 Town Comprehensive Plan. I will present each section tonight of the proposed amendment, and then I'll open up to board members for questions and comments. A majority of the Planning Commission members must agree upon comments that will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners. A simple show of hands will suffice until the final vote at the end of the meeting. Comments will then be recorded and presented to the Board of Commissioners. So we won't have to have a single vote on every single comment. If you have any comments, we'll just show hands, and then at the end, we'll make one.
Does that include the two that they specifically asked us to comment?
Those two probably should be done separately.
With separate voting?
Yes, probably, most likely. So applicability, so this is the first section. Section 10, "Any sign erected, altered, or maintained after effective date of this ordinance shall conform to the new regulations." Are there any comments or questions on this section? Hearing none, we'll go on. Section 20, I'm gonna read this because I think it's really well, really well put, and I think it really states something for our town. So, "Signs perform an important function in identifying and promoting properties, businesses, services, residences, events, and other matters of interest to the public. The intent of this ordinance is to regulate all signs within the town to ensure that they are appropriate for their respective uses in keeping with the appearance of the affected property and surrounding environment and protective of the public health, safety, and welfare, general welfare, by (a) setting standards and providing uniform scientifically-based controls that permit reasonable use of signs and preserve the character of the town; (b) prohibiting the erection of signs in such numbers, sizes, designs, illumination, and locations as may create a hazard to pedestrians and motorists; (c) avoiding excessive conflicts from large or multiple signs so that permitted signs provide adequate identification and direction while minimizing clutter, unsightliness, and confusion; (d) establishing a process for the review and approval of the sign-permanent applications; and (e) ensuring sign designs that build on the traditional town image and visual environment of the town, the town seeks to promote." So, don't worry, I'm not gonna read every single section, but I thought that was a really good section. Are there any comments or questions on the purpose of intent section? Hearing none, we'll keep going. So for Section 30, these are just the definitions. This section covers seven pages of definitions, and it's needed to defend the ordinance. Unless someone has specific questions about this section, we'll skip over going over every definition. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
You know, like, whenever you write regulations, like, heck you're doing here and so forth, it seems like oftentimes, something gets forgotten.
Yes.
Not intentionally, but you can't think of everything, it seems like. And so I'm just wondering, you know, we got this long list of types of signs. And I think it's very good, but what if something comes along a few years from now? Somebody comes up with a new type of sign? Are, is this regulation flexible enough that it has the mechanism to handle unknown signs at this time?
Yes, excellent question, and we actually caught that in the past recent months. So what we did add, which I will talk about here in a few sections, in the Section 40, prohibited signs, we added a section that says, "You, any sign which is not expressly permitted under this chapter or which does not satisfy the required criteria for the sign as stated in this chapter." So basically, if they come out with some hologram sign, and it's not specifically stated in here, it's prohibited. And then, the resident or business could go to the Board of Commissioners and ask for that to be as a permitted sign, as a text amendment.
Okay.
Does that satisfy your question? Okay.
I had a question.
Yes.
The limited duration sign, it says a non-permanent sign that is displayed on private property for more than 30 days but not intended to be displayed for an indefinite period. Is there a cap on that, like, the indefinite period?
Yes, so anything over 365 days, I would consider as a zoning administrator indefinite period.
Okay.
So, that's one comment that you could make, that we could put a number in there so that it states specifically, that's kind of flexible, like Keith was saying. So that's something we could do, definitely.
So, would they have to come back for a permit in a year, or?
They wouldn't be permitted to use that. If it was over a year, they would have to get a permit for a permanent sign.
Permanent sign, okay, I got you. Okay. So, as long as it's clear to you as an administrator that that's what that means, I suppose.
Sure, that's a good comment, actually, yeah. So that's something we could think about. Is that something the board would want to consider while we're in this section, adding a timeframe?
I think it might be good just so there's clarity on that.
Sure.
Because when I read it, I, you know, I did read the whole ordinance, and I wasn't sure I missed it somewhere, if there was a cap on this or not, but...
So...
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I kind of missed some of the...
Sure, so a limited duration sign is, which we'll go over here shortly. It's a sign that's greater than 30 days, but less than 365 days. So Mr. Long was saying that there's not an actual cap in the ordinance, so he's recommending that we put a specific date, a time, 360 days, 100 days, whatever you want to do.
Okay, I see what you mean, okay, yeah.
And I didn't have any specific number in my head, but it just said, "displayed for an indefinite period", and so when something says indefinite to me, it's indefinite.
Yeah. That's a very good point.
So if a year's good, you know, that's fine with me.
So, Mr. Chairman, if that's something that you'd want to consider, a time, or?
Well, we do, do we want to make this as a, one of our comments? With whatever our final decision is, to add this as one of our comments? Is that how we want to handle that?
Yep, that's up to the board.
If so, would you want to propose a motion? A motion to add this comment?
Is that what we should do?
That's fine, yeah.
To the decision?
So before I do that, I mean, is the year, is 365 days a reasonable time cap for that?
I think it's reasonable, but if the board doesn't want, you know...
Or should it be shorter?
It could be shorter. I've seen, you know, 365 days, I've seen six months, so it's up to the board.
So I don't want to get too far, I feel that you may have been, you may intend to speak about this later, but... So, what kinds of signs are non-permanent?
So it'd be like, maybe a banner for some kind of event, like Community Heritage Days. If they wanted to put it out, say, for two months before, that would be a limited duration sign. Anything less than 30 days would be a temporary sign.
So if it's put out for things like Heritage Days or things like that, I mean, a year actually seems pretty excessive to me.
That's a good point.
But... I mean, it would seem to me six months should be plenty of time for something like that.
Well, it is limited, it's gonna be there before, and then when it's over, it's gone.
Right.
That's what I would think, but it doesn't explicitly state that here.
So you could do 60 days, 90 days, 100, whatever you want.
What are your thoughts on that? I mean, I don't want to get too rigid and make things overly rigid, but... I mean, I'm willing to make a motion, but I'm not sensing how you guys feel about this yet.
I mean, if we leave the 365 as a cap, then we, you know, then certainly, it's gonna be that or less, and we can always, I think, deal with something within that one-year timeframe. Now, is it worded, is it worded currently that would say, you know, 365 is indeed the cap? Or is it allowing little area that you could go beyond if you wanted to?
It's allowing a little bit of gray area for administration.
If we can kind of, I think we ought to try to eliminate that gray area as much as we can.
Understood.
And like, I would say, leave the 365 as, and let it be known that that's the cap. If anything goes beyond that, that's gonna have to call for a new approval or whatever, an extension approval, or something would have to be done in order to go beyond 365.
Well, right now, in the definition, it doesn't say 365, it says an indefinite period.
Oh, I see, okay, well...
There is no number.
Okay, alright.
That was my bigger point. There's no number at all on the cap. Unless it's buried somewhere else that I missed.
Right, so also you gotta think about private signs, too. So do you want a private business sign to be up a year, six months, you know, saying, "We're open now"? Do you want that to be up for a long period of time? A year's a long period, or shorter?
Okay, well, it'd be my opinion that a full year is way too much time to allow.
That's my sense.
I would suggest six months, as kind of a compromise on this, but that's just my thought.
Kind of where I'm leaning.
I can agree with six months, that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then, that under the definition of limited duration sign, that it state, instead of displayed for an indefinite period, it should read, "but not intended to be displayed for more than six months."
Okay.
That's very reasonable.
Yeah, and as I understood you to say, we don't need to take it beyond this at this point. It would just be one of our comments that would be added.
Well, I was making a motion.
Well, since you made a motion, we'll just...
But if, okay.
We can just do that.
Unless you want to handle it differently than that, I mean...
If everyone's in agreeance, we can just, if everyone agrees, you know...
We call that unanimous consensus?
Consensus. Then I'll add that to my list, and then at the end of the meeting, I'll put all the comments, state all the comments for the record, and then you can make a motion like that.
Alright.
Okay, good comment. So next section is Section 40, these are prohibited signs. So these are the signs that staff is proposing to be prohibited in all zoning districts. So abandoned signs, snipe signs. So first, I'm gonna go back to the abandoned signs. So these are signs that have not identified or advertised a current business, service, owner, product, or activity for a period of at least 180 days of, in the case of an off-premise sign, or at least 360 days in the case of an on-premise sign. Snipe signs, so these are signs that are tacked, nailed, posted, pasted, glued, or otherwise attached to trees, poles, stakes, fences, public benches, streetlights, or other objects replaced in the public property or public right-of-way, or on private property without the permission of the property owner. So, "Signs shall only be attached to utility poles in accordance with state and utility regulations." So basically, if we, if staff sees this, these kind of signs, this ordinance is giving us permission to take them off. Marquee signs, better located in, there's one in Gettysburg, at the Majestic Theater.
Majestic Theater, that's what you were thinking of.
So vehicular signs, this regulation does not include the use of business logos, identification, or advertising on vehicles primarily actively used for business purposes and/or personal transportation. So basically, we will allow the side sign, it looks like a sticker or a magnet on the door. However, we would not allow the big billboard sign on the back of the pickup truck. Mechanical movement signs, including revolving signs. These have parts that physically move rather than merely appear to move as might be found in a digital display. Penit strings and streamers, this may sound kind of restrictive, however, after doing some research, it's very distracting to drivers and can cause accidents. So animated flashing, or signs that scroll or flash texts or graphics. Another distracting sign. Inflatable device or balloon signs, with the exception of balloons used in a temporary, non-commercial situation. So for example, on the left there, that would be prohibited, but as your Christmas decorations, your Easter decorations, that would be allowed.
A clarification, so that one on the left, does that include those, I don't know how to describe it? They're tall, thin guys, and their arms are kind of flapping when the air is blowing up in them?
Yes, that would be prohibited.
Okay.
Reflective signs, or signs containing mirrors. Interactive signs, these are pretty neat, which are electronic or animated signs that react to the behavior or electronic signals of our motor vehicle drivers. This is something new. Signs incorporating beacon or festoon lighting. Roof signs. And I won't read through all these, but basically, anything that emits smoke, vapors, particulate matter, sound, odor, or contains open flames. Signs promote illegal activity, and as we stated before, "any sign which is not expressly permitted under this chapter or which does not satisfy the required criteria of the sign as stated in this chapter." So anything new, we will be protected for, so we don't have to come back to you in five years when the whole new slew of signs come. So for the current code, here's a list of what is currently prohibited. So as you can see, we are increasing the number of prohibited signs. Are there any question, oh, please note, if they're not specifically prohibited or regulated in the code, it is permitted. So for example, if, say, example, Subway wanted to put a flaming sign out right now, there's nothing that we could legally do to stop them. So are there any comments or questions on the prohibited sign section?
Okay, about billboards. I know we, like it says up there, we have prohibited them, prohibited them with the current rules, and now we're taking that out. That doesn't mean that we're now gonna start allowing billboards, does it?
In certain districts, and we will go over that in off-premise. So if we could just wait off on that one, we'll get into pretty big detail on that one.
Is that coming under the category of freestanding signs?
Yes.
Okay.
You're correct.
I know that the whole term of billboards didn't seem to be anywhere in the new, in the new reg.
They're called, now they're called off-premise signs.
Off-premise signs, okay.
So Section 50, signs exempt from permit requirements. So these are the signs that are permitted in all zoning districts without a permit. Official traffic signs, governmental regulation signs, these are signs erected by government agencies. Holiday and seasonal decorations. Personal expression signs of any type, including flags, provided that they do not exceed three square feet in area per side, are non-commercial in nature, and are not illuminated. Address signs, up to two, stating address number and/or number of occupants on the premises. Private drive signs, you can have one per driveway entrance, not to exceed two square feet. Security and warning signs. Flags. Vending machine signs. Memorial, public monument, or historical identification signs directed by the town, including plaques. Incidental signs, including window signs that, or these are signs that display general information, instructions, directives, or restrictions that are primarily oriented to pedestrians who have entered the property from a public street. So basically, these are, we accept Visa, the hours and everything else. Directional signs, provided that they do not contain commercial messaging. Art and murals. And then there's some more signs here, signs inside a building or other enclosed facility which are not meant to be viewed from the outside and are greater than three feet from the window. So basically, if someone has a Coca-Cola sign in their house, and it's greater than three feet away, we're not gonna, you know, regulate that. Signs of, or emblems of religious, civil, historical, or educational organizations. So basically, the stars of David, the cross, and such. Legal notices, signs that are permanent architectural features of a building or structure. Signs advertising the variety of crop growing in a field. Limited duration signs, which we'll talk about very shortly. Temporary signs, and portable signs, which we'll also go in detail. Here's the current list of exempt signs.
A question first.
Sure.
In the beginning, you talked about that one, one thing we're doing now is to kind of ensure that we don't, that our new reg is not going to be, I think you used the term "content-based", right? But yet, in some of these items we just covered, one of the things you talked about was, we're not gonna allow any personal, personal expression on signs. Could that, could somebody say, "Well, that's content, so are we okay with that"?
Well, these are the signs that we're allowing, so...
Oh, we are allowing, okay.
Yep, these are the ones that we, they don't have to get any kind of permits, they don't even have to tell us about it.
So if a person wants to put a sign in their yard where they're gonna talk about their political beliefs...
They can do that.
That's okay.
Yes. However, we do put restrictions on which the court said we could regarding how many and how big. So someone can't put a Bernie, 100 Bernie, you know, placards in their yard. We will, we can regulate that, and we would regulate that. Okay, so exempts, that's what we have right now. So are there any other questions or comments on that? Anything you didn't like, or do you want to see on there? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to the next section. Section 60, these are the general regulations. So this includes general information such as location, materials and construction, area, height, spacing, but most importantly, sign illumination. So this is very important discussion. So, so why do we want to start regulating illumination? So, let me use a few examples, and Mr. DeTherich has heard these examples probably 30 times now, but I'm still gonna use the same ones. So say, the ABC Company is the developer for Brookfield. Homes are slowly selling, but they want to sell the rest of the lots in the next year. They want to make money. In order to do this, they want to install the biggest and brightest sign that they can get to attract more buyers as they pass by. The current code would allow them to install a 50-square-foot internally-lit sign. They could legally install the brightest bulbs that money can buy and have the sign lit all day and all night long. The new sign code, which we're proposing, would set daytime and nighttime brightness standards and set hours of illumination from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, or half hour past the closing, if it's a business, whichever is later. This would protect residents from obnoxious light pollution that they are currently vulnerable to. Let's do another example, let's say that I live in Pembroke. My neighbor is adding a new garage, and the ABC contractor is conducting the work. ABC contractor is currently allowed to install a 24-square-foot... ABC contractor is currently allowed to install a 24-square-foot internally lit sign in my neighbor's yard promoting, uh, his or her business while the construction of the garage is taking place. Uh, this sign may be lit all day and all night long. There's nothing town staff can do about it. The new sign code would not allow illuminated temporary signs. Uh, the contractor would only be allowed a six-square-foot, um, freestanding sign. So we could spend a couple meetings going over situations such as these, which will be avoided, um, if the new amendment is passed. So please turn, if you have it with you, if you don't, that's fine, um, to page 15 of the proposed ordinance. If you don't have it, here it is on the screen. So this is the illumination summary table. So, you know, someone's looking to see if they can, if the business can have a certain kind of illuminated sign at their business. Instead of having to read all the legal technicalities here in the, the ordinance, they just have to go to this and say, yes or no, it can be permitted. So first, let's talk about the four types of illuminated signs. So these include internal illuminated sign, a message center sign, external illuminated sign, and digital display signs. So first, let's talk about internal illuminated signs. So these are a light source that is concealed or contained within the sign, and becomes visible in darkness through a translucent surface. Um, internally illuminated signs must be static in intensity and color, and this does include neon signage. Um, the Board of Commissioners has specifically asked for you to comment on whether or not you believe we should allow internally illuminated signs in the village zone. Uh, we have not received any negative comments from property owners or businesses regarding allowing these types of signs in the village zone. Currently as written, we are allowing these types of signs in the B1, B2, which are both commercial districts, ORI, Industrial Park, and Village Zone, and off-premise, and institutional. So these types of signs would be allowed in all those districts, which is pretty much everyone. So please provide comments for the record, and what are your thoughts on the village zones specifically right now?
Was there a reason why they were asking about this one specific sign in the village zone?
So Glenn, please correct me if I'm wrong. It sounded like that this was a huge discussion back when the first, this original sign ordinance took place, and I guess businesses wanted it, but residents were against it. Um, so it kind of sounded like to me, they don't want it to be really bright all the time for residents in the village zone.
Yeah, exactly. That's proven to be just like of it also.
Yep. So, um, one thing we did add to the ordinance for protection, what I just said earlier, is we have, um, time restrictions. So for an example, if the Palms Restaurant was open till 11:00 PM, they would be allowed to be, they would be allowed to have their internally illuminated sign, if they had one, on to 11:00 PM, or half hour past the close. So 11:30 technically. They would not be allowed to be on, you know, midnight, 1 o'clock if they're closed.
And then in addition to that limitation, there's a limitation, of course, on size.
There's a limitation on size.
Is there a limitation on, um, brightness?
Yes, sir. We'll talk about that here in a few minutes.
I was trying to think of all these things that affect these, these signs in the village zone.
Yes.
That we probably need to be aware of.
Yes, there is on brightness also.
Okay.
So, um, I might ask Commissioner Blanchard, I mean, did the general public have a concern about this during this, uh, these recent public hearings?
I think it was more from, from the business perspective, to be honest with you. I don't think it was so much from the public. I mean, I think it was basically some of the different businesses that wanted to keep this going.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last thing.
I think it was basically some of the different businesses that actually want to keep this going. You know, they like the internally lighted signs. Do you have, you have a comment from the public?
I was the only.
Okay, I know that's what.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to remember, basically. Yeah, I mirror comments from businesses, but I don't really call anything for the public. I mean.
If you're, yeah, if you please, uh, come to the microphone, if you'd like to make a comment.
So I've been attending all of the EBPA's meetings, and they are very supportive of this, and they really want it, um, but it's the board's decision.
Okay.
Do I give my name and?
Jack Deathridge.
Jack Deathridge. Um, I was the only resident that came to any of the meetings.
Yeah, I mean, do you really remember anything from the public coming out? That was like.
No, it was, it was just the business people.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of why I thought it was curious that the Board of Commissioners were asking us to comment about this one thing. I, I mean, I don't, not that it matters, but I just find it curious.
Yeah, anybody I've talked to, my neighbors, like, we don't know what's going on. We don't care. So, that's, I guess I represent the, the public here, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um.
So I would say leave it in. I mean, you have it written now so that the neon signs are allowed in the village zone, correct?
Yes, the neon signs in particular, they do have a limitation.
That's what it was, makes real limitation.
So the mayor and staff, and the business community, EBPA, has basically negotiated, um, we got, we met in the middle. They wanted two neon signs. Um, we went with one.
Okay, that's what it was. Each business was allowed one specific sign.
Yep.
That's what, yeah, that's right.
Well, the neon signs, they can have like a neon open sign.
Uh-huh.
I think it's, I'll have to look, I think it's one or two square feet maximum, but they could also have a, a regular.
One that advertises actually what they're doing.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, the mayor, uh, you know, he had some concerns with the neon signs.
What, do you know what they were?
Uh, since we live in a nationally registered historic district, um, he believed that neon signage did not fit the, um, the district.
Well, you know, neon signs are a historical sign in themselves.
Yeah, exactly.
They go back and define an era of the twenties, thirties, and forties that a lot of our properties are also noted for. So, I, I would question the, the concern of it, of neon signs fitting into Emmitsburg. Cause I think from a design point of view, uh, fitting in with the character of the town, uh, the, the small signs that we normally see, they're from that era of the twenties, thirties, and forties. I thi, I think historically, they're a part of it just as much as the buildings themselves.
Okay.
My opinion.
So it kind of sounds like consensus states that allow internally illuminated signs in the village district.
Yeah. Everybody kind of feel awake, so.
It shouldn't be in historic areas, neon signs. I don't think, I don't think neon signs should be in historical areas where the houses.
Well, see, that's what I was saying, though, Joyce, that neon, neon is a, neon is a historic sign in itself, the type of sign to fit in.
Ms. Rosenstiel, so are you voting no for the internal lit signs in the village zone?
I mean, it's all okay out there, Silo Hill and all those places, but.
Well, I thought I read that when we were talking about that, uh, type of sign, that it said that neon signs weren't considered to be a part of that category.
They are considered internal, because the internal gas.
Okay, they are considered.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if we're gonna say internally illuminated signs in village zone, we're also saying neon signs are also.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are you saying you disagree with that?
I, no, I agree with you.
You do agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good.
So we're, we're, another unanimous consensus for that particular comment. To, to, to allow, um, this type of signs in the village district.
And would you like me to add the, that they are historical in nature?
Sure.
Now, we do have a size, like, limitation on this, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Once again, what's the repeat, what's the size limitation?
We'll go to that, i- if you don't mind. We'll talk about that, the village zone.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. So the next type of illuminated sign is the message center sign. So this is a type of illumination, changeable copy sign that consists of electronically changing alphanumeric text, often used for gas price display signs and athletic scoreboards. I personally love the Lower Allen Township sign. I wish we had that here at our building. Um, so these are gonna be, we're proposing to be permitted in both commercial districts, the ORI, IP, institutional, and off-premise. Externally illuminated signs, these have an artificial light located away from the sign which lights the sign, the source of which may or may not be visible to persons viewing the sign from any street, sidewalk, or adjacent property. Um, these, where permitted, are subject to the following regulations. Um, the source of the light must be concealed by translucent covers. Um, they should be a steady, stationary light source, shielded and directed solely at the sign, and we are proposing to allow this in all zoning districts. Digital display signs, um, these are a portion of a sign made up of internally illuminated components capable of changing the message periodically. Uh, digital displays may include, but are not limited to LCD, LED, and plasma displays. Uh, we're proposing to allow these in the commercial districts, ORI, industrial park, institutional, and off-premise. So here's some, um, good information here, hours of operation. So signs may be illuminated from 5:00 AM until 11:00 PM, or half hour past the close of the business. Um, so basically, uh, the signs shall be set on an automatic timer to ensure compliance with this section. So, even though this will, uh, signs in town will be grandfathered, which we'll talk about later, the signs, the business signs that are illuminated now, will have to get a timer on it. They are not grandfathered. So they must get a timer, which they're very affordable. Um, message center and digital display signs in particular are subject to the following brightness standards. Uh, during the daylight hours, between sunrise and sunset, luminance shall be no greater than 5,000 nits. At all other times, luminance shall be no greater than 250 nits. So let's talk about what a nit is. So luminance is a photometric measure of a luminous intensity per unit area of light traveling in a given direction. It describes the amount of light that passes through, is emitted or reflected from a particular area, and falls within a given solid angle. Um, the standard unit for luminance is a nit. So as you can see there, there's a 5,000 nit on the right, and then on the left, it's gonna be 1,500 nits, so 250 is hardly anything. Is there a question?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm from an old school, talked about foot candles.
Oh, foot candles, yep.
Not nits.
Mm-hmm, I understand. A lot of ordinance still have foot candles.
Okay.
So, the current code for illumination, there's not much. Um, no intermediate, or flashing illumination. Internally lit signs are allowed in all zones, except the village zone, where there are only allowed one lit sign per street frontage. Um, electronic variable message signs are prohibited, and no other illumination standards exist. So are there any comment, comments on this section? Hearing none. We'll go on. On-premise signs. So these are signs whose message and design relate to an individual business, profession, product, service, event, point of view, or other commercial or non-commercial activity, sold, offered, or conducted on the same premise for which the sign is located. So I'm not gonna read through all this, but basically, um, it just provides what's gonna be allowed. For example, no portion of a wall sign shall be mounted eight feet above the finished grade, or extended more than 12 inches to the building. It's basically safety, um, standards. So are there any questions on the on-premise section? It's basically similar to what we have now, a lot of safety standards. Hearing none, we'll move on. Um, so off-premise signs. So these are your, your billboard signs, that's, that's what they're called. So, these are an outdoor sign whose message directs attention to a specific business, product, service, event, or activity, or other commercial or non-commercial activity, or contains a non-commercial message about something that is not sold, produced, manufactured, furnished, or conducted on the premises upon which the sign is located. These are also known as your billboard signs, third-party signs, or outdoor advertising. Um, as Mr. Sodik said earlier, these are currently prohibited. Um, so the larger billboards we're proposing are to be permitted in the, uh, these only, these are the only districts where we're proposing this to be allowed. So the general, commercial, B2, office, research, and industrial, park, ORI, and industrial park, IP, um, and that's it. So the largest sign permitted in the specific districts is 150 square feet, or 10 by 15. So size is dependent on speed limit. So the, the reason behind adding this is, uh, we are very lucky to have US-15 running through, um, basically our town. Um, staff and the mayor thought it would be good to allow businesses to take advantage of US-15, and possibly bring more business into town. Um, that was our thoughts. So also, there are smaller off-premise signs permitted in all other zoning districts. However, they are subject to those specific regulations in those districts. So for an example, the village zone, uh, you can have an off-premise sign. So the Antique Mall, for an example, wants to have a small, um, off-premise sign off of Main Street. Because nobody, you know, coming through that's never been in Nemetsburg before knows that they're there. So th, they were one that really wanted us to push and bring that, and which I agree with personally, and staff agreed with. Um, basically, they would have to get a permit, and they would be, um, they must abide to the strict regulations in the village zoning district. So they couldn't do 150 square foot sign, it would have to be whatever's specifically stated in that, um, village zone. Does that make sense? Yes.
What's the size of these? What sign, um, do we have a regulation on that?
So right now, they're prohibited.
Okay. I mean, altogether itself.
Yep.
Are we looking at limiting the size, or?
No, so those signs, once passed, would be considered non-conforming.
Uh-huh.
So for example, the one on North Eton Avenue, if they would ever want to replace that sign, it could not happen.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Um, also, one thing I did not mention in here, the size is dependent on speed limit. So, I'll tell you what page to go to here. Go to page 17, if you have your ordinance with you. Um, so these are maximum sign areas. So if the speed limit on the road is less than 35 miles per hour, it, the maximum size will be 60 square feet. Speed limits between 36 and 45, maximum, would be 100 square feet, and speed limits from 46 to 55 miles per hour would be 150 square feet. And these are, we just didn't make these numbers up. These are based on scientific calculations of what's a safe, what's the minimum size that you can actually see and get the message without, you know, being dangerous.
Striking driver.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
So are there any questions, concerns, comments on the off-premise?
Now with, uh, like, about 15 going through town, is the, being that it's there, does the state highway administration have any rules regarding signs along their road?
So they don't have any sign, uh, size limitations. They have, uh, if it's in their right-of-way,
Yeah.
they have to get a specific permit through them for safety standards.
Okay.
We do have safety standards put into the ordinance. Um, let me see here, let me read one that's pretty important. So every five years, um, we're requiring that the owner of the off-premise sign shall have a structural inspection completed, made, um, of the sign by a licensed engineer registered in Maryland, and shall provide the town a certificate certifying the sign is structurally sound. So, we don't want some massive sign, you know, 150 square feet sign crashing down on US-15, or on, you know, in town for residents. We want it to be safe.
Sorry, another question on those. With the town limits being where they are, how do we regulate alongside of it? I mean, this kind of goes back to the state administration. How do we regulate along 15? Do we have any sort of power on this?
Yes, so.
Will you follow?
So there's US-15, you see the Emmett Gardens?
Okay.
Um, US-15 is, goes north and south, and it's white. So.
Got it.
It's basically.
So it does fall within our town?
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right.
Mostly near Silo Hill, where the sleep-in is, and where the new rudder's gonna be, and the industrial park down by Emmett's Per Glass. So we do have jurisdiction there.
Okay, I was just kind of curious about, you know, being a state highway, I wasn't sure how we, we would be able to regulate, but that section, would we be able to?
Yep.
Huh.
So as stated, as you can see now, you got colors in front of you, the red, we would allow it in the red.
Okay.
Um, the blue, the, um, industrial park, which is the white polka dots, and blue.
Okay.
In that area. So are there any other comments, questions, concerns?
I got one more here. So I understand that Emmitsburg and other towns around here, they're a part of this, what they call a heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, and they've, I understand, have their ideas about things to ensure that the landscape and areas around this area, historical areas and so forth, maintain a certain quality and conservation and so forth. Are our sign requirements kind of, does it jive with what this organization is also wanting us to do? Did you check into any of that?
Staff did not check into the hollow ground, no.
Okay, I just kind of wondered if they, since they take up a larger area certainly than our town, if they had some thoughts on what restrictions we might want to impose, not necessarily in our town, or maybe they did, I don't know, I just don't know what they may have in their thoughts, and how our plans is in sync with what they're doing, or what they want us to do.
Sure. We did not have that done.
Just a comment on that.
So there are certainly billboards along Route 15 in other areas, and I should have researched this more, but I heard in past conversations that the billboards that are out there now are more or less grandfathered in, and there wouldn't be any more allowed in like a county sense.
So I actually had a question with that, somebody asked me about that, and I think it was Kathy, town manager, and that's actually not true. I reached out to Frederick County, and you can have billboards all throughout Frederick County.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, this is good? Okay. We'll keep moving on here, we're making good time. So, let's see, I'll go back here, limited duration. Okay, so limited duration signs, so this is something we talked about earlier. So these are non-permanent signs that are displayed on private property for more than 30 days, but as we stated before, are not intended to be displayed for an indefinite period. So we did, I did write that down as a comment to the Board of Commissioners for the six months. So the maximum size of the sign is dependent on the size of the property and whether it is residential or non-residential. So limited duration signs may be freestanding signs, which you see on your right, window signs, which you see on your left, or wall signs, which you see in the middle. The most common limited duration sign are freestanding signs for real estate. So that's another thing to bring up. So, real estate signs. And we can't, we can't exempt them from that because it's content-based. So that, now that it jogs my memory, that's why I put that. We, it's going to be tough to regulate real estate signs. In my opinion, we don't want to get people giving permits for real estate signs, it'd just be a nightmare.
Right. So our earlier discussion about the limited duration signs, and we restricted it to six months for that kind of sign, that example, that might be a little too short. Although if you haven't sold your house in six months, you got problems.
I apologize for missing that, that's.
But no, no, I'm glad you brought that up.
So for example.
That shows it in a different way, yeah.
Brookfield, for example, you know, they've had, Brookfield has had that sign out there for years, and they're still trying to sell homes, which they should be, because they have a lot of lots left. Same with Southgate, right across the street here, they've had their sign out in our farmer's market lot for a couple of years. So is that something the board wants to remove, keep the same? It kind of throws a wrench in there.
I would not want to prohibit a real estate company from trying to sell property. I mean, obviously, we need to turn over houses, we need to basically try to fill these lots as a community, so I would not want to do anything that would prohibit them from being removed these properties. So that's my personal feeling.
I just think there ought to be a way of, an easy way for that six-month limitation to be extended for a particular situation.
I don't have the answer for that, because it's content-based. Real estate signs are content. It's just like saying, you know, Christianity sign.
Well.
Well, earlier when we were discussing the definition, and it was stating that it was for an indefinite period, and you were saying, well, you know, after a year, you as the administrator would take a look at that, or something to that effect. So, setting aside that it might be a real estate sign or whatever, but it, I mean, I'm not sure how to say this.
It's a sticky subject.
Yeah, I mean, if, so if we set kind of a tentative cap, and they have to come back and have it reevaluated, but, you know, I'm not trying to make a lot of work for staff, but, you know, it shouldn't be that a, someone should just be able to put up a sign and have it there forever, you know, without a permit.
If I may say, this might be a good thing for me to go back to the solicitor and ask, so that could be a comment. Reach out to the solicitor and see what can be done for this, maybe. It's up to you guys.
I wouldn't think we would need to, I know we're talking about real estate signs, but it could be for anybody.
Yeah.
That comes under this category. If they got it out there, six months are up, well, they got to come to you and decide whether they're going to take it down, or are they coming in to have it reevaluated if they want to get an extension? But that process ought to be simple, but at least it is a process that has to be done to handle the six-month timeframe for those kind of signs.
So remain the same, it'll just be reevaluated after six months? Staff will reevaluate?
That's what I suggest.
I think so.
Okay, so we'll just leave it as is? I think that's fair?
I think so.
Okay. Alright, so where are we at here? Okay, the current code. So, oh, also illumination is prohibited, so you cannot illuminate these types of signs. For the current code, these are regulated as temporary signs, which we specifically, you know, put apart, these are two different things in this new ordinance. So the maximum right now is 32 square feet. Sign area is cumulative, so it's prohibited if you're maxed out in square feet. So say a business wants to, right now, a business wants to put up a limited duration sign, the current code, say they're subway, they're allowed to have 50 square feet, however, if they're already maxed out, they're not allowed that limited duration sign. This would be a whole new set of guidelines, so it would permit them to have, you know, grand opening sign, or now hiring sign. Right now, it would be strictly prohibited. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go to the temporary signs, section 100. Any type of non-permanent sign that is located on private property that can be displayed for no more than 30 consecutive days at one time. The date of erection of a temporary sign must be written on the lower right-hand corner of the sign, and they may only put this sign up two times per year maximum, within a 365-day range. Temporary signs are exempt from permit requirements, however, they still must comply with the requirements of this particular section such as size and area. So temporary signs may be freestanding, window, wall signs, banners. Illumination of these types of signs is prohibited. When I think of a temporary sign, I think of, you know, grand opening, some kind of fest, festival, something that's going to be up pretty short. Current code, here's the current code, maximum 32. Again, they are prohibited if you're already maxed out in square feet. Are there any questions on temporary signage? So hearing none, portable signs, this is a new section that we are proposing to allow. So these are currently prohibited in all zoning districts. These are signs designed to be transported or moved and not permanently attached to the ground, building, or other structure. Illumination of these signs is prohibited. Hours of display, portable signs shall not be displayed on a premise before 6:00 AM, and shall be removed each day on or at 10:00 PM. However, all portable signs must be taken in during hours of non-operation of the business and during inclement weather. One sandwich board sign is permitted per establishment, and they shall have a maximum square footage of seven square feet or 3.5 feet high. There are two types of portable signs. The first is a sandwich board sign, which you can see on your right. These are a type of freestanding portable temporary sign consisting of two faces connected and hinge at the top, and whose message is targeted to pedestrians, also known as an A-frame. And second, vehicular signs, these are signs affixed to a vehicle in such a manner that the sign is used primarily, primarily as a stationary advertisement for a business in which the vehicle sits, or is otherwise not incidental to the vehicle's primary purpose. So obviously, we don't want to have someone come in for a permit every time they want to put their business logo on the side of their car. So as I said, they're currently prohibited. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll keep going. Street pole banners, section 120, these are banners suspended above the public sidewalk and attached to a single street pole. These signs shall not contain any commercial advertising. Illumination of street pole banners is prohibited, and they shall have a maximum area of 12.5 square feet and maximum width of three feet. Only up to two banners are permitted per street pole. However, only the town may hang street pole banners in the village zone. The town manager must approve all requests, and the state highway administration must approve requests to suspend a banner across Main Street or South, or, excuse me, or Seaton Avenue. So we've had a lot of discussion on this, and a lot of nonprofit organizations have been wanting to hang banners across Main Street and South, or Seaton Avenues. However, we do not have that authority to allow them to do so. We only have the authority to allow these types of banners on our own, town-owned streets. Same goes with county, any kind of county roads, we don't have the authority. So we have a stipulation in the ordinance that they, we have to see the approval from state highway administration and the county before that can happen. So there's nothing we can do about that unfortunately. The current code, street pole banners, they're not permitted on publicly-owned street poles, they're regulated as temporary signs, and sign, again, sign area is cumulative. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll keep going. So now we're going to get into the nitty-gritty of the specific districts. I'm not going to read all the numbers, because everybody will fall asleep, so if there's any particular questions, please let me know. So the conservation recreation district is shown here on the zoning map in green. The majority of this property is owned by the town and is our parks. Again, instead of stating a bunch of numbers, please let me know if there's any specific questions, the slides compare the current code versus the proposed code, so. If there's not any questions, I'll keep moving on. Okay. Hearing none, we'll keep going. Signs in the residential R1, R2, and R3 districts. The residential districts here are shown here in the zoning map in yellow, beige, and orange. Again, here is the current and proposed. Any questions on that section? Hearing none, the signs in the institutional district. The institutional district is shown here in the zoning map in purple. There's only a few businesses in this district. Current, proposed, again. And those watching at home, I can provide numbers, just call me or email me. So as you can see, we break it down into acreage. So properties with over five acres have, are allowed more signage. Any questions, institutional? Next is the village zone. The village zone is shown basically along north and south Seaton and Main Streets. It's basically white with blue dots. Again, current, proposed, I know we've all had a lot of time to read this, so I won't go over it. Any questions on the village zone? Signs in the, the commercial, industrial park, office, research, and industrial districts. These districts shown in red, light blue, blue and green with lines, and white with black dots. Current versus proposed? Sure.
Back to the village zone for a moment.
Yeah.
Is this the area when we, where we were going to discuss the second of the Board of Commissioners' requests for comment? Should the town's architectural guideline document, et cetera?
That's in section 160, yes, you're correct. Thanks to you for checking that. So, the board had a simple request, and I, and staff agrees with it, this is something we overlooked. Said, should the town architectural guidelines document be added to, added as a review criteria for the following proposed sections? So section 1738-160D, installation must not damage or require removal of historic materials, which we would add this, as determined by the National Park Service, Maryland Historical Trust, and the town's architectural guidelines or historical commission, and we would end there, and must be done in a manner that such signs can be removed without harm to the masonry or architectural detailing. So what it sounded like, the board was concerned that town staff wouldn't have any teeth, any guidelines to determine what an actual architectural feature is. So someone can make an argument, well, you know, that's an architectural feature, but it's actually not, so they would have a good foot to stand on, and we would, would not. So staff does recommend adding these two sections there. Additions to the sections.
The additional wording for these sections?
Yes.
That seems to make sense to me. But I had a question, it says the town's architectural guideline, where do we find that?
So the town's architectural guidelines can be found on our website, EmmitsburgMD.gov.
It's not in the ordinance.
It's not in the ordinance, it was passed, if I'm not mistaken, by a resolution. The board passed that back in 2012, and actually, Mr. Surtik wrote the architectural guidelines.
Yes, I did.
So the board loves those guidelines for the historic districts, so they believe it should be, we should use it.
I agree with that.
Is there any comments? I guess there's a consent that we should. Just let me write some notes here. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Long. We're almost done Glenn, I swear.
I didn't mean to heavy sigh though. It's been a long day.
Okay, so I think we were at the, section 170, were there any comments or questions on that? Alright, we're almost done. So section 180, removal of unsafe, unlawful, or abandoned signs. So here's the current versus proposed, and I will read this, because it is pretty important. So how it's currently written, there are unsafe and unlawful signs, so no sign shall be permitted which through damage, disrepair, or lack of maintenance is or has become impaired in its functionality or blighted in its appearance, it must be removed within 45 days. So we added abandoned signs? Or, excuse me, this is still in the old, I'm sorry. When a sign structure does not include a sign for a period of 120 days, consecutive days, such sign structure shall be deemed a violation and shall be removed. One second here. Okay, so now the proposed, so what we're proposing. So signs shall be removed within 30 days if it becomes unsafe or is in danger of falling, or becomes so deteriorated that it no longer serves a useful purpose or of communication. The town may remove or cause to be removed the sign at the expense of the owner in the event the owner has not. in the event the owner has not complied with the terms of the thirty-day notice. In the event of immediate danger, the town may remove the sign immediately upon the issuance of notice to the owner. And lastly, abandoned signs, the sign shall be removed within a hundred-and-eighty days of the sign becoming abandoned, and the town may remove or calls to be removed the sign at the expense of the owner, so basically what we did here was we are allowing town staff to remove it if we do not hear anything back from the property owners. This is for safety. But they will get letters, so we just won't take it out. Any comments or questions? Permits and applications, so here's the current, the town shall have five days from the receipt of an application to review or approve. The applicant, which is most important, the applicant may not appeal the zoning administrator's denial or partial denial to the Board of Appeals because it's not currently located in the zoning ordinance. For the proposed, we're giving staff a couple more days to ten business days. Reason being is, for an example, when the redders comes in, they're gonna have a lot of signage, and it's gonna take us a while to make sure they comply with the ordinance, so we want to make sure we don't miss anything. Uh, let's see, oh, the applicant may resubmit or appeal the decision to the Board of Appeals within thirty days. The Board, or the applicant may request a variance from the Board of Appeals, however, they must show hardship, and that's, that's a pretty hard criteria, but it's there. All new sign, all new illuminated signs, digital display sign, message center signs shall require certification in order to demonstrate continued compliance with the brightness standards, so that's something we talked about before too. Are there any questions? Joyce is ready to go home. So, we'll try to wrap this up quick here, so non-conforming signs in section two-hundred and section two-ten, so I lumped these together. Currently, it states, signs legally in existence at the time of adoption of the ordinance which do not conform to the requirements of this ordinance shall be considered non-conforming, or better known as grandfathered. How we have it proposed, basically it's the same. Signs on the premises of, however, we add signs on the premises of legally non-conforming uses such as an office in a residential area may remain until the existing use of the premise is discontinued, so for example, if the Board of Commissioners change the, the zoning district in the B-one district, those businesses may still have their signage until they go out of business. If that makes sense. Any questions? Hearing none, substitution clause, section two-twenty, this is new. Currently, they have none, the proposed, to the extent of this chapter, to the extent that this chapter allows a sign containing a commercial copy, it shall also allow a non-commercial commercial sign to the same extent. So the purpose of this provision is to prevent any inadvertent favoring of commercial speech over non-commercial speech, or vice versa. This provision does not create a right to increase the total amount of signage on a parcel. After doing some research on this, this was a court case that this pretty much has to be in all new sign ordinances. Looks like there's a question.
Just wondered if that, the terms commercial versus non-commercial, that ought to be defined.
Okay.
You know, it's one of the two definitions to add.
Let me mention, and it's definitely not in the definitions?
I, I don't recall seeing those in there, just what are we talking about?
Okay. So I see what you're saying, there's not a, there's not a definition for commercial, commercial.
Yeah.
So it sounds like that's a comment that may want to be added.
Okay. Okay, any, any?
Makes sense.
Anybody want to add to that, the idea of adding two definitions for commercial and non-commercial?
When you're referring to commercial and non-commercial, you're confusing, like I'm gonna have a yard sale, and I'm gonna have a sign in my yard, but then another company up the street is gonna advertise, they're gonna advertise something special, so that's commercial, right?
I guess you can consider that commercial.
That's how I decipher it.
Sure.
So, so the motion would be that we have these, these terms defined in the appropriate chapter.
And I will, if the Board agrees, I will reach out to the town attorney to do so, because that's a very sticky subject in in this area, so. Okay, sounds good. Lastly, violations. So the current code, it says, any violations punishable, any violation of this provision of this chapter shall be deemed a municipal fraction punishable by a fine of a hundred dollars. Each day a violation continues shall be considered a new violation. We are proposing to increase this.
Time frame, get rid of it?
Yes, they are. Yep, they do get a letter, and it is our standard procedure to at least, to send at least two letters to people before we do any kind of fining. Excuse me, proposed, we are requesting and recommending to increase this to a thousand dollars per day. Each day a violation continues shall be considered a new violation, so let me explain this, so this will only be done in very extreme circumstances, and the town manager, it's standard procedure for the town manager to approve any kind of fines, so I can just can't, or Amy just can't find somebody without getting her permission, which also goes before the mayor. So we do take that very seriously. The reason why we are recommending an increase is because staff costs have dramatically increased over the years, and lawyer fees have increased dramatically over the years, so when we have to, if the person doesn't pay the fine and they want to go to court, the town attorney has to go on our behalf with staff to represent the town, which can cost thousands of dollars. Again, we won't start with this, if it gets to this, we'll start low and dramatically increase if it's not done to the code. Are there any questions or comments, concerns on this section?
So would they really need to say up to a thousand dollars, rather than just simply a thousand dollars? For the fine?
Let me, I think that was a question by the Board of Commissioners, Glenn, wasn't?
Well, it says not to exceed one thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I messed up on the slide, it does correctly state in the ordinance, the Board did have that comment as well.
Okay, yeah, that is come up.
Yep. It, the ordinance does say, just like Mark confirmed.
The ordinance does say.
Not to exceed, that's the maximum.
Okay.
Yep, so I just incorrectly wrote it on the slide.
Okay.
So, that's everything, so from what comments I have heard so far, is the first comment, limited duration definition should be changed to, from a timeframe from sixty days to six months. Second, internally illuminated signs in the village zone is okay. You think it's decent, and it, these types of signs have historical aspects to them, and from the nineteen twenties and thirties. Third, Town's Architectural Guidelines should be added, as the Board recommended, to sections one-sixty-D and two-hundred-E two. And lastly, commercial definition should be added, and also a non-commercial definition should be added. So there's four comments. So now the Board shall decide if they want to recommend approval of the ordinance with these four comments, or recommend denial of the ordinance with these comments.
Okay. So from from us here, are there any further discussion or questions about the entirety of this regulation? Anybody care to make any more comments before we take, before we take a motion?
I'd just like to say I appreciate all the work that's going into this, I mean, this is very comprehensive. Spent a lot of time on it, and I know the Board of Commissioners have, and they have had public meetings, if, even if you're the only one that showed up. You're appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Long.
It's a lot of work here.
We did spend a lot of time, the mayor spent a lot of time. He's been really talking with residents and businesses to make sure that they're okay with this. Kind of sounds in the past, there was a pretty bad scenario, we didn't want to do that this time, we want as much sunlight on this as possible. We want people to be happy with this. We're not trying to shove anything down people's throats, we want to get this right.
Remind me, Zach, if we move this forward tonight, is it on the agenda for the June first meeting? Or is it July? For the?
August.
August, okay.
Yep.
So, it's gonna be advertised and everything else, okay.
Yep, we'll have a public hearing, and then the Board will actually vote on, to put that on the August agenda at the July first meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense, alright, got it, okay.
Any other comments or questions on the entirety of this proposal?
I'm ready to make a motion.
You may make a motion, yes.
I move to recommend approval, approval of proposed ordinance nineteen-dash-zero-three with the four comments that we've previously discussed.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance with the four comments.
Mr. Chair? Sorry, I think I'm allowed to vote on this one, because all I'm doing is moving it forward. I'm not actually voting for the approval of it, so I don't think I'm double-dipping here.
I think you're correct.
To support this.
I think you're correct.
I think I'm allowed to still vote on it in August, so. I think, if I understand correctly. Because all I'm doing is moving it forward, I'm not actually. Okay.
That's all we're doing, that's right.
Yeah, exactly, okay, just making sure, I was like.
I think you're correct, but if you want to abstain just to be safe, it's up to you, it's up to you.
Alright, sorry, I better abstain.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Alright.
It's better safe to be sorry.
Alright, motion has been made in second, and to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance nineteen-oh-three. All those in favor of the motion say aye? Aye, opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention. The motion carries, three-zero.
This way I'm free to vote for it in August.
Yep, you're free to vote then.
Yeah.
Okay. All done. Very good, no more, no public comments. And end of the agenda. Anything else before we adjourn? Anybody? We're all set, okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion? It's second. Meeting is adjourned.
The meeting is adjourned at?